Abreu.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Botcher.
Present.
Brannon. Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers. Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felder. Felice. Brannon. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Momorato.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Moya. Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikov. Williams.
Here.
One.
Present.
Zhuang.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Palladino. Speaker Adams.
Present. Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Imam Abdussalam Musa of Islamic Circle of North America Al Marqas, which is located at 166-2689th Avenue in Queens.
Bismillahirohmanirohim. In the name of God, most merciful, most compassionate, praise be to the Lord of the universe, the mercy-giving, the merciful, ruler of the day for repayment, you do we worship, and you do we call for help. Guide us along the straight road, the road of those whom you have favored, with whom you are not angry, nor who are lost. Alif la Amin. This is the book, which contains no doubt. It means guidance for those who do their duty, who believe in the unseen, keep a prayer, and spend something from whatever we have provided them with, who believe in what has been sent down to you as well as what has been sent down before you. While they are convinced about the hereafter, such people hold on to guidance from their Lord. Those will be successful. Is all the same whether you warn them. Those who disbelieve or do not warn them, they still will not believe. God has set a seal on their hearts, in their hearing, while over their sight their hangs are covering. They will have a severe torment. Some people say, "We believe in God in the last day." While they are not believers, they would like to deceive God in those who believe, while they merely outwit themselves and do not even notice it. Their hearts contain malice, so God has increased their share of malice. They will have a painful torment before they have been lying. And truly, God speaks the truth. Amin.
Thank you, Imam Musa. I would now ask Councilmember Natasha Williams to spread the invocation on the record. Thank you, Majority Leader. Dr. Abdussalam Musa is the Associate Imam at Iqna Al Marquez in my district. He is also the Visiting Professor of African-American Muslim Studies at the Graduate Theological Foundation. Dr. Musa is a diplomat with the College of Pastoral Supervision and Psychotherapy, a board-certified clinical chaplain, and a board-certified pastoral counselor. He's like my personal advisor as well. Chaplain Musa is currently the president and co-founder of the Southeast Queens Muslim Collective and the former director of the United Muslim Movement Against Homelessness, a former program of Iqna Relief. He is the advisor of the Association of African-American Imams of New York. He is the co-founder of the first Muslim Women's Shelter in Queens, formerly known as the Muslim Women's Help Network and currently known as Iqna Relief Transitional Housing. Chaplain Musa has been a passionate activist in the secular and Islamic community for over forty-five years. And for over twenty-five years, Dr. Musa has been engaged in working with the interfaith communities as well as working to address the social ills that affect communities. Dr. Musa has trained individuals from all faiths in the art of clinical pastoral education for the past eleven years. He worked closely with St. John's Episcopal Hospital in Farrakha Way, New York, Park Christian Church in New York City, and the Mosque of Islamic Brotherhood in the Village of Harlem. Thank you so much for being here, Imam Musa. I would like to make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record. Thank you. We will now ask Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse for the adoption of minutes.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of April 24th, 2025, and May 1st, 2025 be adopted as printed.
Sorry, we are striking the May 1st. It's just the minutes of the stated meeting be adopted for May 28th as printed. But thank you, Councilmember. Messages and papers from the mayor? Pre-considered Ms. 144 and 145, Mayor's Home Rule Messages. Governmental operations, state and federal legislation. Communication from city, county, and borough offices? None. Petitions and communications? None. Land use call-ups? M146. Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu. Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Thank you. Brooks Powers. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felder. Felice.
I don't know.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Brooks Powers. Land use call-ups.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Momorato.
I vote aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moreno.
Aye.
Moya. Moya. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov. Williams.
I vote aye.
Abreu.
Aye.
Thank you. One.
Aye.
Thank you. Zhuang.
Aye.
Vernikov. Thank you. Ariola.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Moya. Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you, sir.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of fifty-one in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams. Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to start by addressing what we've all been forced to confront these last six months: the immense harm coming from the Trump administration in Washington, D.C., whether it is how ISIS is spreading fear and undermining safety in our city and cities across the nation, or the bills in the Trump-led Congress that are threatening hard-working New Yorkers and Americans. There's been a consistent attempt by Trump to distract us, but we need to be clear about what we're facing. Trump and his allies in Congress are currently advancing budget cuts that will hurt our families. They are proposing to take health care away from 1.5 million New Yorkers by cutting Medicaid and are even discussing additional cuts to Medicare for our older adults. Their big, ugly bill would steal critical food aid off of the plates of over one million New Yorkers, taking food out of the mouths of over 360,000 children. This is all happening as hard-working people in our city and country are struggling with the cost of living. And yet, Trump's reckless decisions are making basic goods more expensive and slowing our economy. Trump's administration doesn't care about Americans' or public safety. They've even harmed 9/11 survivors. Recently, the same Department of Justice that attacked our city terminated $811 million in grants for crime victim services, funding for the police, and other key programs that keep people across the country and our own city safe. Let's be clear: our own federal government is attacking the everyday people of our country. Trump is taking away our food, our health, and our safety. This isn't what we or our neighbors across this country expect from our federal government, and it's certainly not what any of us deserve. It's not what our elders deserve. It's not what crime victims deserve. And it's not what our children deserve. And certainly, it's not public service because it's not serving any American or any of us. Monday marked the end of Eid al-Ara, also known as the Feast of Sacrifice. I hope that all who celebrated had a meaningful and reflective time. June 12th is Loving Day, which marks the anniversary of the Supreme Court decision Loving versus Virginia, which ended anti-miscegenation laws and allows interracial marriage in the United States. June 12th is Philippines Independence Day, marking the country's independence from Spanish rule. And June 14th is Flag Day, when we celebrate the adoption of our national flag back in 1777. June 15th is Father's Day. Happy Father's Day to all in the house today. I hope you have a meaningful day celebrating the fathers and father figures in your own life as well as remembering those who are no longer with us. June 19th is Juneteenth, which commemorates the day in 1865 when people who were enslaved in Galveston, Texas finally received news of their emancipation. June is Black Music Appreciation Month, when we honor the widespread contributions of Black musicians. Whether it's gospel music, jazz, soul, house, or hip-hop, Black musicians have created entire cultures and industries celebrated throughout the world. June is also Caribbean-American Heritage Month, when we celebrate our Caribbean-American communities for their many contributions to our city and country. Throughout June, we are also observing Gun Violence Awareness Month to acknowledge the crisis of gun violence. As a council, we're committed to making our city safer and bringing an end to gun violence. And June is Pride Month. This council is always committed to uplifting and supporting LGBTQIA+ New Yorkers' happy pride. A very happy birthday to Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, whose birthday was on the 5th. Councilmember Pierina Sanchez, whose birthday was yesterday. And Councilmember Minority Leader Joanne Ariola, who will celebrate her birthday on the 14th. Happy birthday. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items: Western rail yard modifications, several proposed land use actions to allow for future development of the remaining open portion of the West Side Yard, which is part of the special district known as Hudson Yards in Councilmember Botcher's district. The council is modifying the zoning special permit in the modified restrictive declaration to reflect key project changes, including: it will no longer include a casino; it will include approximately 4,000 total residential units; at least 420 units or 25% of the total number of rental units, whichever is greater, will be newly constructed, affordable units; and it will have an increased amount of publicly accessible open space from 5.6 acres to a total of 6.6 acres within the development, including at least one acre of lawn space. 73 through 99 Empire Boulevard rezoning, a private application to facilitate the development of a new 13-story mixed-use building in Councilmember Hudson's district. It will feature ground floor and cellar commercial space and 261 housing units, 52 of which will be deeply affordable at 40% of the AMI under MIH Option 3. 166 Kings Highway, a private application to facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use development with approximately 85 housing units, 21 of which will be affordable under MIH Option 1, and ground floor commercial space in Councilmember Zhuang's district. The council is modifying the application from an R7D district to an R7A district and to require MIH Option 1. Ocean Crest, Article 11, an HPD application to facilitate the development of an eight-story building with approximately 89 affordable home ownership co-op units in Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers' district. Next, we will vote on the following finance items: a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon would approve a budget modification pursuant to Section 107 of the city charter. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Brannon's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new 30-year partial Article 5 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Carolina Rivera's district. Pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon amending a previously granted tax exemption for one building in the Lower East Side in Councilmember Rivera's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new 40-year Article 5 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Salam's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for seven lots in Councilmember Narcisse's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish- would establish a new partial 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for five lots in Councilmember Abreu's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Gennaro's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new partial 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for six lots in Councilmembers Rivera's and Abreu's districts. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for a lot in Councilmember Caban's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Council Brandon, Councilmember Brannon, would establish a new partial 40-year Article 11 tax exemption, as well as a partial three-and-a-half-year retroactive Article 5 tax exemption for two lots in Councilmember Salamanca's district. Next, we will vote on the following home rule resolutions. M144, to discontinue the use of parkland within Ferry Point Park in the Bronx. M145, to extend the authorization of the use of speed cameras in school zones. SLR 6 will amend the vehicle and traffic law to authorize a 5 mile per hour speed limit for open streets. SLR 7 will amend the general municipal law to allow certain child beneficiaries to receive accidental death benefits for the duration of their lifetime. SLR 8 will amend the administrative code related to the verification of participation in the rescue, recovery, and cleanup operations at the World Trade Center site after the terror attacks on September 11, 2001. SLR 9 will amend the retirement and social security law in relation to the eligibility of EMT members to opt into the 25-year retirement program. SLR 10 will amend the retirement and social security law in relation to the normal retirement age for the members to access the New York City Fire Department Pension Fund. SLR 11 will amend the general municipal law in relation to disabilities of members of the uniformed force of the sanitation department. SLR 12 will amend the City Charter to allow access to sealed records and certain confidential records by the civilian complaint review board to complete their investigations. SLR 13 will amend the retirement and social security law in relation to the transfer of service credit between certain retirement systems. SLR 14 will amend the retirement and social security law in relation to eligibility for participants in the automotive 25-year age-50 pension plan with more than 30 years of credited service who remain in active service after age 62 to receive a service retirement benefit equivalent to the standard received by Tier 6 members. SLR 15 will amend the retirement and social security law to provide a heart disease presumption for certain probation officers. SLR 16 will authorize the city to convey certain property to the Bedford-Stuyvesant Volunteer Ambulance Corps. SLR 17 will amend the retirement and social security law and the administrative code to permit surviving spouses of certain retirement plan members to retain benefits upon remarriage. SLR 18 and 19 will amend the general municipal law in relation to disabilities of deputy sheriffs. SLR 20 will amend the retirement and social security law and the administrative code to establish 25-year retirement programs for members of the city's water supply police. SLR 21 will amend the retirement and social security law to change the definition of the overtime ceiling. SLR 22 will amend the retirement and social security law in relation to permitting certain 25-year retirement program dispatcher members to file elections not to participate. SLR 23 enables a five-year extension of an existing de-cas initiative called the Sale-Away Program, allowing the city to sell certain limited city-owned property to an abutting property owner without an auction or competitive bidding process. We thank our staff members Santa Soriano Vasquez, Joel Zulo, and Rick Arbello on our intergovernmental affairs team and the entire legislative documents team, particularly the one and only Jonathan Ettrix as he moves through the chambers, Matthew D. Stefano, Ruthie Del Franco, and Yvette Molina. Next, we'll vote on the following resolutions. Resolution 371, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S-6643A, This would establish the Gate Money Program, which would provide up to $2,550 over six months to those released from state correctional facilities to help cover essential needs like food, housing costs, court-related debts, and employment preparation. We thank our staff members Natalie Meltzer and Jeremy Whiteman. Resolution 66A, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban, would strongly condemn the Trump administration's ongoing efforts to dismantle federal labor protections, express unwavering solidarity with unionization efforts across New York City's workforce, and affirm the fundamental right of all workers to organize, bargain collectively, and hold free and fair union elections. We thank our staff members Elizabeth Arts. Resolution 520, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would recognize July 2nd annually as Third Good Marshall Day in the City of New York to promote his contributions and legacy as a pillar of the civil rights movement. He became the first black United States Supreme Court Justice in 1967 after being nominated by President Lyndon B. Johnson. Thank you to our staff member, William Diore. Resolution 853, sponsored by Councilmember Yusuf Salam, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to amend the vehicle and traffic law to permit a motor vehicle's vehicle identification number, or VIN, to be listed in a notice of violation instead of a license plate number in circumstances when a license plate of such a vehicle is missing, concealed, obscured, or distorted. Thank you to our staff member, Josh Kingsley. Resolution 339B, sponsored by Councilmember Carolina Rivera, would call on the New York State Assembly to pass and the governor to sign S-1226A, 6004, or the Local Input in Community Health Care, or LICT Act. The LICT Act would require advanced public notice and engagement through a comprehensive review process involving experts and community members before a hospital submits its final closure plan. Thank you to our staff members Joshua Newman and Ria Ogasara. And next, we'll vote on the following legislation. Introduction 272A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would amend the citywide bathroom strategy to require an update regarding the status of each active or planned capital project to install a public bathroom at a site identified by Local Law 115 of 2022. Thank you to our staff members Jessica Boule and Mark Chen. Introduction 1050A, sponsored by Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa, would prohibit the Taxi and Limousine Commission from requiring the vehicles it licenses to have personal injury protection, also known as no-fault liability coverage, in an amount greater than 200% of the amount required by state law. Thank you to our staff members Elliot Heisler and Mark Chen. Introduction 206B, sponsored by Councilmember Shahana Hanif, would require the Department of Corrections to provide annual training to all uniformed staff on the proper use of opioid antagonists and make the training available to individuals who are incarcerated. DOC would also be required to stock areas where individuals in custody are housed with opioid antagonists and make opioid antagonist kits available to individuals upon discharge from DOC custody. Thank you to our staff members Jeremy Whiteman and Natalie Meltzer. And finally, introduction 573A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the Department of Parks and Recreation to install at least 50 outdoor drinking fountains in public parks no later than June 1, 2035. Thank you to our staff members Chris Satori and Patrick Mulvaill. Thank you for your attention. Now, I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd first like to recognize Councilmember Ose, followed by Brewer, then Rivera.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The Bedford-Stuyvesant Volunteer Ambulance Corps, or known as the Volleys, is the nation's first multiracial volunteer ambulance corps and is considered an anchor and beacon of life to the Bed-Stuy community. Since their inception in 1988, the Volleys have responded to our community's emergencies and trained generations of volunteer emergency medical services members coming from Bed-Stuy and nearby neighborhoods in Brooklyn. Due to these efforts, the Volleys have decreased ambulance response time in Bed-Stuy from an average of 30 minutes to an average of four minutes. Today, I'm proud to support the Home Rule to authorize the conveyance of 727 Green Avenue in Brooklyn from the city to the Bedford-Stuyvesant Volunteer Ambulance Corps at no cost. This will allow the Volleys to have a stable, permanent home to ensure they are able to remain in Bed-Stuy for years to come, even in the midst of gentrification. I urge all my colleagues to vote yes on reconsidered SLR 16, and I also want to acknowledge that the Bed-Stuy Volleys are here with us this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Rivera and Hanif.
Thank you. I'm calling about water fountains, Intro 573A. I don't think that New Yorkers should have to purchase a single-use bottle of water because there's no public option available. This intro increases the number of durable and permanent drinking fountains at park entrances citywide. They have to be within 100 feet of an entrance. We have great water in New York, thanks to DEP and others, but it's one thing to have the resource and another to have access to the resource. My interest in this topic of free access to drinking water started with Richard Murphy, who was Commissioner of Youth Services during the Dinkins administration, which I was proud to serve in. One of his big, practical ideas was giving every public school student a refillable water bottle, and I still want to do that. The problem was, and still is, that we need water fountains to fill them. People want them. During the participatory budgeting cycle in our office, West Side has voted to allocate $375,000 for new water fountains in Riverside Park. We only get three for that. Goodness knows, they are expensive. But we need this legislation to provide equity. When we had a park discussion here in the city council with some of the people who run the conservancies, it turns out that in one particular park, all the water fountains either are dripping, small drips, or they do not work. So we need this bill to make sure that we have abilities to increase the number of permanent drinking fountains at park entrances. Thank you very much. And I want to thank, by the way, Councilmember Krishnan and also the people who worked on it from my office, Sulew Warren, Pooter, and Cynthia Horne, as well as the people from the Speaker's office mentioned by the Speaker. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Rivera, followed by Hanif and Majority Whip Brooks-Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm pleased to support two Article 5 tax exemptions, which we are voting on today, one in Kipps Bay and one in the Lower East Side. Together, these exemptions will preserve 396 apartments, affordable homes available for people making 50% of the area median income or less through the Project Base Section 8 Mark-Up-to-Market program. These Article 5 tax exemptions will support families and seniors in stable housing and provide for the property owners to make necessary upgrades for accessibility and improved quality of life. Why these two are particularly important to me? One is for our elder community, and particularly those with disabilities, called the Renwick Gardens on East 29th Street. And the other is a 172 Project Base Section 8 building called 210 Stanton Street, where I spent the first approximately 30 years of my life. These preservation opportunities are one of the tools we have to address our housing shortage. And of the multiple tax exemptions I have passed, knowing my childhood home will be around and improved means a lot. I urge everyone to vote yes. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Hanif, followed by Majority Whip Brooks-Powers and Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we are voting on my bill, Intro 206B, to address the crisis of opioid overdoses in our city jails. I'd like to thank Speaker Adams for including this bill on the agenda, Criminal Justice Chair Nurse for moving it through committee, and Councilmembers Rivera, Ose, Botcher, Narcisse, and Public Advocate Williams for introducing it alongside me. From 2022 to 2023, at least 10 people on Rikers Island died of a suspected drug overdose. These tragic deaths could have been avoided if the opioid antagonist Narcan was properly administered. Nothing we do can bring these New Yorkers back, but I'm glad that we are taking real steps to save lives moving forward. If passed, this bill will require the Department of Corrections to do the following: administer Narcan training to all uniformed staff, make training available to incarcerated people, stock Narcan in all housing units, verify that Narcan is properly stocked on a weekly basis, provide annual reporting on training and the administration of Narcan, and make opioid overdose kits available to those being discharged from jail into the community. I'd like to thank Alex Liao, Nishat Jodhri, Matt Malloy, and Muslamia from my team, Jeremy Whiteman, Natalie Meltzer, and Sarah Suter from the Legislative Division, and the direct service providers who have informed and supported this bill, including the Legal Aid Society, New York County Defender Services, Brooklyn Defenders, Bronx Defenders, and the Urban Justice Center. I urge my colleagues to vote yes.
Recognizing Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, followed by Councilmembers Joseph and then Minority Leader Ariola.
Thank you. Today, I call on my colleagues to support the Article 11 tax exemption for the Ocean Crest Development, a project that marks a milestone in the pursuit of affordable homeownership in Far Rockaway. Ocean Crest will be the first 100% affordable homeownership project in the Rockaways in more than 10 years. It represents a critical pathway for working families, especially families of color, to not just finding housing, but to build equity and generational stability in the city they call home. This project is a result of sustained advocacy, tough negotiations, and a shared commitment to doing development differently. Through that process, we secured meaningful community benefits that will make Ocean Crest more than just a place to live. It will be a source of opportunity. Those benefits include a 50% local hiring commitment for residents of Community Board 14, a 35% MWBE contracting requirement, use of union labor with a labor monitor to ensure accountability, significant stormwater and resilience infrastructure, and targeted outreach to NYCHA residents to ensure they can access these homeownership opportunities. These victories reflect what happens when we center homeownership in the development process. I want to thank our partners who helped bring this to the finish line: Congressman Meeks, Senator Sanders, Assemblymember Anderson, Community Board 14, community builders, and my colleagues in government. I want to also express my appreciation to Deputy Mayor Carayan for his support in this process. Today's vote affirms our commitment to bring in permanent affordable homeownership to Southeast Queens. It's a vote for fairness, for stability, and for the long-term health of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today is a great day for New Yorkers. We are one step closer to ensuring access to clean, safe, accessible public bathrooms for all New Yorkers, visitors, and tourists, any day, anytime. I'm thrilled to share that my bill, Intro 272, has passed the committee. Thank you, Chair Brooks-Powers, transportation and infrastructure this morning, introducing in partnership with Manhattan Bowl President Mark Levine as part of my bathroom bill package. This legislation requires the city to report on previously identified sites for public bathrooms. This bill promotes transparency by mandating updates on project details, timelines, funding, maintenance plans, and specific locations. Best of all, this bill goes into effect immediately. Let's be clear. Access to clean, safe bathrooms is not a luxury. It's a basic human right. By expanding access, we are sending a clear message to everyday New Yorkers, visitors. We see you, we hear you, and we care about your dignity and safety. New Yorkers deserve better. They deserve easy access to bathrooms that are clean, safe, and accessible anytime, anywhere. I am proud we're making this happen. Thank you to my team, the central staff, Bowl President Levine, and every organization that helped make this possible. Thank you.
Recognizing Minority Leader Ariola, followed by Councilmembers Juan Marmarado and Botcher.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I rise to speak about Mayor's Home Rule Request, M0144. We are all duly elected members of this body and residents of our districts that sent us here. We are here in these hallowed halls to represent their interests, to ensure government works for them, not against them, to fight for their values, to ensure their needs are met. And perhaps the most vital responsibility a member has is the land use process, a process that was meant to ensure the substantial projects built in our communities are shaped by the members of their communities. That is why member deference is such a crucial principle, because each and every one of us knows what is best for our communities, because we are on the ground every day. We are part of our communities. It's not an anti-development principle, it's a pro-community principle. But that principle is being thrown out today for a casino, not a critical infrastructure, not a life-saving medical facility, not an urgently needed housing, it is for private money-making venture. I'm not opposed to casinos. I have one that is great in my district and has been a great corporate neighbor. But Bally's has not been that. From the very start, they have not operated in good faith. They haven't made real attempts to sit down with the local council member to address her community's very real concerns or to even respond to her very reasonable requests. Now, they're asking for your approval to take away parkland so they can build their casino on it. And then, they're trying to justify this by saying it's not really a member deference issue. If taking away public land from a community and giving it to a private corporation is not a member deference issue, what is it? Let's remember, this was not going to happen because many of you all saw it for what it is, even though some of our colleagues who don't represent the district were working hard to push it through. The votes to pass this Home Rule simply weren't there. Now, at the 11th hour, the mayor has taken an interest in this project and has decided to issue his Home Rule himself, which coincidentally makes this much easier to pass. This is the same mayor who is proposing right now to take away the council's powers on land use with its charter revision commission. So before you cast your vote, ask yourself why? Why the sudden interest in our very principled, not-that-ethically-compromised, straight-shooter of a mayor? To paraphrase the bard, "Something is rotten in the state of New York." I urge you all to reject this unwarranted interference and to hold this body's longstanding principle of member deference. And I urge you to vote against this tainted rule. Thank you for the time.
Recognizing Councilmember Juan, followed by Marmarado, then Botcher.
Seventy-five years ago...
Seventy-five years ago, being on the wrong side of the DMZ in Korea meant that you could be part of the North Korean DMZ, North Korean Line or the South Korean Line, meaning that you could have been separated by your loved ones, and it could mean that you live in hunger and under communist rule. And this is why, and you were separated from your loved ones forever, like my grandparents were separated by their siblings. So this is why today we're voting on our resolution, eight-nine-six, which will recognize June twenty-fifth as the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Korean War and recognize this day annually as a Korean War Remembrance Day in New York City. The Korean War is a devastating memory that still affects many American veterans, Korean natives, immigrants, and 2.5 million people lost their lives and many had their livelihoods taken away. Negotiations ended the war in nineteen fifty-four, but tensions continue to exist between the two Koreas. So this Remembrance Day is honoring those who served and sacrificed their lives for the well-being of our country and the innocent lives that were tragically lost in this conflict. If it weren't for U.S. intervention, I probably would not be sitting here with you today. So we have hope continued to, that this resolution will ease more tensions and establish a long-lasting peace. And as a Korean immigrant, I know firsthand the significance of never forgetting so that we can continue to put in the work for the future of our lives as well as our children. And I give my deepest condolences to everyone who has lost a loved one to this fight. I thank everyone who has served in the Korean War, and I thank all veterans for risking their lives for the sake of our nation's protection. I would like to thank my colleagues for supporting this resolution, as well as Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Regina Paul for assisting and writing this resolution, as well as the Veterans' Chair Bob Holden for his support. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Marmarato, followed by Bacher.
Colleagues, as we prepare to vote today, I want to speak to you as not just the council member of District Thirteen, but as a mom constituent and representative of the people of District Thirteen. This isn't just a bad proposal, it's been a disgraceful process. The people of District Thirteen have been ignored from the very beginning. Instead of working with me, the person chosen to represent this community, the sponsors of this deal actively worked around me. And let's call it what it is: outside interference, and that's absolutely unacceptable. I was not elected to serve the mayor, lobbyists, unions, or developers. I was elected to serve my constituents, and they've made it clear they do not want this casino in our district. This proposal brings no investment, no infrastructure, and no respect for the people who actually live in the district. It does everything from outside interests and nothing for my neighborhood. Let's be honest, this was never about jobs or fairness, it was about political favors and special interest power plays. We were elected to represent our communities, not to sell them out. And I urge you, stand with me, stand with my district, help me represent my constituents, stand with the people that have made their voices very clear, and vote no against M-0144. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Bacher.
Today, we are voting on a land use action that will help transform the Western rail yards, currently open rail tracks, into the vibrant twenty-four-seven neighborhood that Hudson Yards was always meant to be, full of life, energy, and opportunity, day and night. This action will bring up to four thousand new homes to the site, one of the most significant expansions of Manhattan's housing stock in a generation. In a city where the housing crisis is displacing long-term residents in every neighborhood of every borough, this kind of housing production is exactly what we need. We cannot fight displacement and bring down rents if we are not building significantly more housing. Twenty-five percent of the rental units will be permanently affordable, with a minimum of six hundred and twenty-five permanently affordable units, nearly doubling the three hundred and twenty-four affordable units included in the original two thousand and nine plan. But this project is about more than just housing. The Western rail yards will feature six-point-six acres of green space, along with a public school, daycare facilities, and other community amenities, tens of thousands of jobs, including commitments to local hiring. The plan no longer includes a casino, but it remains a once-in-a-generation opportunity to deliver the housing, school seats, green space, and opportunity that New Yorkers urgently need. There are still important details to be worked out as part of this plan, but today's vote is a historic one, and I want to thank the Council Planning and Land Use Division with Perestrauter and his team, Carl Wilson and my staff, and everyone who made this possible. I'm proud to be a member of this body today and look forward to working hand in hand with the community to ensure that this plan lives up to its promise.
Thank you, and seeing no one else sign up to speak, I'm going to take a moment. Today, the council is taking a decisive action to address a longstanding injustice, one that has denied the children of fallen Detective Miosoltis Familia the support they deserve. In 2017, Detective Familia was assassinated in the line of duty. In the aftermath of that tragedy, her eldest daughter, Genesis, who was only twenty years old at the time, stepped up to raise her younger siblings. She became their guardian, their provider, and their protector. But because of outdated pension laws, Genesis has been denied access to her mother's benefits, not because she didn't take on the responsibility, but because the outdated law refused to recognize her role and position. This home rule message is the city council's formal and powerful message. It affirms that caregiving matters, that sacrifice matters, and that our laws must evolve to meet the realities of our families and first responders facing. Over the past year, my office has worked to move this forward, securing the necessary fiscal analysis, drafting viable bill language, and building the coalition to get it done. This is not just symbolic, it is essential. It's how we make change, and it starts here. It started with Genesis. Thank you to Speaker Adams for supporting me in this home rules development and today's passage, and thank you to all of my colleagues for your votes. Genesis, thank you for your trust in this process. We are proud of this moment, and thank you all for supporting this home rule. I'll now turn it over to Speaker Adams.
Genesis, I was going to say something else, but my colleagues just really put the exclamation point on any comments that I may have for you. You know how we feel about you, you know how we feel about your perseverance, your strength, and your courage through this process. I personally want to thank you for those that will come after you, that will get the benefits that they deserve because of what you did and because of your mother's sacrifice. You are honoring her today, and she is proud of you today, and for that, we say thank you to you.
I'm now going to recognize Deputy Speaker Ayala.
Thank you, and I just want to say before I say anything else, Genesis Yamama will be really proud of you. I just wanted to speak very briefly on Resol Zero-One-Four-Four. I want to clarify that we're not voting on a casino today, we're voting on allowing the Bronx an opportunity to submit an application. I think that is from a lens of equity, it's only fair that they have that opportunity. And, you know, this is not, you know, we're not at the point yet where we are approving anything other than allowing an application to pass through. And this has, I don't want to underestimate the impact that this will have on the Bronx if there should be an application at some point, you know, there is an opportunity for economic opportunities that this borough desperately needs, but we're not there, we're not there at all. This is just giving them an opportunity to apply, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro Two-Zero-Six-B, opioid antagonists.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, M-one-thirty-six and Reso Nine-Thirty-Eight, budget modification.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU Three-O-three and Reso Nine-Thirty-Nine through pre-considered LU Three Twelve and Resos Nine-Forty-Eight and Nine-Forty-Nine, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, pre-considered Ms. One-Forty-Four and One-Forty-Five, Mayor's Home Rule Messages.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered SLR Six through pre-considered SLR Twenty-Three, Council Home Rule Messages.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU Two-Eighty-Seven and Two-Eighty-Eight, Grace Houses.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section One-Nine-Seven of the New York City Charter.
Pre-considered LU Three- Seventeen and Reso Nine-Fifty, Ocean Crest, Article Eleven.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro Five-Seven-Three-A, outdoor drinking fountains.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro Two- Seventy-Two-A, public bathrooms.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro Ten-Fifty-A, TLC-required insurance coverage.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, LU Two- Seventy-Five and Reso Nine-Fifty-One, and LU Two- Seventy-Six and Reso Nine-Fifty-Two, Seventy-three-Ninety-Nine, Empire Boulevard rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU Two- Seventy-Seven and Reso Nine-Fifty-Three, and LU Two- Seventy-Eight and Reso Nine-Fifty-Four, One-Sixty-Six Kings Highway rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU Two-Eighty-Three and Reso Nine-Fifty-Five through LU Two-Eighty-Six and Reso Nine-Fifty-Eight, Western Rail Yards.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Bacher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye on all, but I abstain on M-one-Forty-Four.
I vote aye on all, like to congratulate my colleagues who are passing legislation today. Thank you.
Caban.
Aye on all, with the exception of SLR Fifteen, Eighteen, and Nineteen, on which I vote no, and M-one-Forty-Four and SLR Twenty, on which I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Carr.
No on M-one-Forty-Four, M-one-Forty-Five, SLR Six, and SLR Twelve, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Congratulations, Genesis, aye on all.
Felder.
I vote aye on all, except for SLR Six, SLR Twelve, and M-one-Forty-Five, and Intro Forty-Seven-B.
Thank you. Felice.
Permission to accept my vote.
Permission granted.
Probably vote aye on all, especially on the home rule related to benefits for family members of police officers. Eight years ago, Police Officer Familia gave her life, serving and protecting the people of the Bronx. We're never going to forget the sacrifice that she made for the community that she loved. We have to honor our fallen heroes and sheros, including Detective Familia, but it's also important that we do the right thing for her family. We always say, if you've served this city, this city will have you back. We always say that, and it's important that we keep that promise. We can't break that promise, so today we're taking action. We're taking steps to change our laws to ensure that families who lose loved ones serving this city are not thrown into financial distress as a result of that. Thank you to everyone for making this possible, thank you for making this a reality, including thank you Speaker Adrian Adams for making this a priority, and Majority Leader Amanda Farias. Also, congratulations to the Familia family, including her daughter Genesis, who has joined us today. We look forward to passing this today and taking this to Albany, and of course, finally putting an end to this issue, which has gone unresolved for far too long. Also, on the issue of public safety, public safety is a priority for the people of the Bronx, and that that we saw eight years ago is just an example of the many dangers that police officers face on a daily basis while serving our communities. On the issue of safety, as we know, police officers cannot do magic. Public safety is a shared responsibility. Police officers cannot do magic, but they do everything they possibly could on that issue, and for that, I'm thankful and grateful, and so is communities like mine. So I vote aye on all. And briefly, also on the Bally's Casino, I also vote aye on that, but of course, this isn't the end of the process. I look forward to, I hope we could continue working to make sure that the final product works for everyone, including and especially everyone in the Bronx, the Bronx, which is literally the most disadvantaged community in the entire city. Thank you so much, aye on all. Perfect timing, so.
Thank you. Gennaro.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of SLR Twelve, on which I vote no.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
I vote no on M-one-one, One-Forty-Four, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. Hanks.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-one-Forty-Five, SLR Six, and SL Twelve.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye on all, with the exception of M-one-Forty-Four, M-one-Forty-Five, SLR Six, and SL Twelve, which I vote no.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye on all, and congratulations to Genesis and your family.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye on all, except for M-one-Forty-Four, for which I vote no.
Lee.
Aye on all, except for M-one-one, oh, M-one-Forty-Four, which I may know.
Lewis.
Aye on all, and congratulations, Genesis.
Thank you. Marmarato.
Permission to explain my vote.
Permission granted.
Okay, just want to clarify something. Voting in favor of this sets the precedent that we reward lobbyists and special interest groups when they go around the local representation and local communities. And that being said, it absolutely will pave the way for a casino to be built. I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-zero-one-Forty-Four, M-zero-one-Forty-Five, SLR Six, and SLR Twelve. I vote no.
Thank you. Marte.
I abstain from M-one-Forty-Four, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. Mealy.
Yes, I vote no on M-zero-one-Forty-Four, and aye on all, and congratulations, Majority Whip, your project is awesome.
Menon.
Permission to explain my vote.
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all, and while I'm voting aye on M-one-Forty-Four because I believe the application process should move forward, I urge that in the ongoing process, conversations be had directly with the council member representing that area, since clearly any project impacts will affect that community, and those concerns and impacts need to be heard and addressed. Thank you.
Morano.
Aye on all, with the exception of M-zero-one-Forty-Four, M-zero-one-Forty-Five, SLR Six, and Twelve, for which I vote no. Thank you, Genesis.
I vote aye on all, and while I'm voting aye on M-144, because I believe the application process should move forward, I urge that in the ongoing process, conversations be had directly with the council member representing that area, since clearly, any project impacts will affect that community, and those concerns and impacts need to be heard and addressed. Thank you.
Morano.
Aye on all, with the exception of M-0144, M-0145, SLR 6, and 12, for which I vote no. Thank you, Genesis, for being here.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-144 and Intro 1050, which I abstain.
Narcisse.
I'm voting aye on all, and the same comment for M-0144, that we need to create the opportunity for the discussion to continue with the council member that represent that specific area. Thank you.
Thank you. Nurse.
I vote aye on all, and I abstain from N-144.
Thank you. Ose.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-11144, on which I abstain.
Thank you. Palladino.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-0144, M-0145, SLR 6, and SLR 12, on which I vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Powers.
Congratulations to Genesis and the family. I vote aye.
Wrestler.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to recognize the staff who work on the state legislative resolutions. Santos Soriano Vasquez and Rick Arbelo. The home rule process is a bear, and, you know, it takes a ton of work and a ton of coordination, and the Speaker's team does a great job, and I just want to thank them for all the effort they put in. I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-144, which I vote no. On M-145, I'm particularly pleased to support the expansion, to support the reauthorization of speed cameras. You know, since speed cameras were implemented in 2014, we've seen speeding decrease by ninety-four percent, ninety-four percent at locations with cameras. I mean, this saves lives, and this five-year reauthorization will continue to save lives across every single one of our communities. Speed cameras are equitably distributed. I wish we were expanding them, but a reauthorization is a good thing, and appreciate, and I just want to lastly recognize Genesis. How you have organized year after year to make this happen has been inspiring, and you would not take no for an answer, and this is happening today because of your commitment, and I'm really proud to be supporting you. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye on all. Just want to say congratulations to Genesis, and thank all my colleagues who are giving the Bronx a chance. Thank you.
Rivera.
I vote aye on all, and thank you all for your advocacy, and to all of my colleagues, congratulations.
Aye on all, and thank you, Genesis, for sharing your mom with us.
Salamanca.
I vote aye on all, and I want to congratulate you, Genesis, but also, I want to acknowledge the hard work from the Majority Leader, ensuring that we're getting this home rule over to the finish line. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we are voting on a home rule that honors the legacy and life of a true hero. Detective Millsotis Familia made the ultimate sacrifice in 2017, just one block away from where I was living, losing her life to protect our Bronx community. In the years since, her daughter, Genesis Valella, hello, glad you're in chambers today, still just a young woman herself, cared for her siblings while fighting for the pension support for her mother, that her mother earned through that sacrifice. Thank you, Speaker Adams, Majority Leader Farias, Councilmember Wrestler, Senator Rivera, Assemblymember Dinowitz, and everyone who came together to support Genesis in her fight. This home rule message is long overdue and moves us closer to justice, not just for Genesis and her siblings, but for all survivors of fallen officers moving forward. This reform will allow child beneficiaries to receive accidental death benefits for the duration of their lives, a common sense, compassionate change that ensures no family in the future has to fight so hard for what should have always been theirs. Detective Familia's legacy lives on, and today, we honor her with action. With that, I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-144, on which I abstain. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Councilmember. Schulman.
First, I want to give congratulations to Genesis and echo the remarks of my colleagues around you. This is a big victory for you, and we're really appreciative of what you and your mom have done. I also want to give a shout out to the Bedford-Stuyvesant Volunteer Ambulance Corps, with whom I worked when I was in the leadership of the New York City Emergency Medical Service in 1989, and worked with the founder, Rocky Robinson. With that, I vote aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ong.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
Aye on all, except no on M-145, SLR 6, and SLR 12, and congratulations, Genesis.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, and my apologies. I want to abstain from M-145 and just echo the sentiment of Councilmember Menon. I hope that the council members whose district, M-144, is happening in, will get the full support that she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams.
I vote aye on all.
One.
Aye on all.
Zhuang.
Aye on all, except M-144, and SLR 6, and SLR 12.
I am a no on M-10, I'm sorry, 0144, M-0145, SLR 6, and SLR 12, and I'm an aye on all the rest. Thank you.
Farias.
I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Speaker Adams.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of fifty-one in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of M-144, which was adopted by a vote of thirty-two in the affirmative, twelve in the negative, and seven abstentions; and M-145, which was adopted by a vote of forty-one in the affirmative, nine in the negative, and one abstention; and Introduction 1050A, which was adopted by a vote of fifty in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention; and SLR 6, which was adopted by a vote of forty-one in the affirmative, ten in the negative, and zero abstentions; and SLR 12, which was adopted by a vote of forty in the affirmative, eleven in the negative, and zero abstentions; and SLR 15, 18, and 19, which were adopted by a vote of fifty in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions; and SLR 20, which was adopted by a vote of fifty in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you so much, Speaker. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions, and a friendly reminder to my colleagues, there is a one minute on the clock, and I'll begin by recognizing Councilmember Caban, followed by Hudson, then Rivera.
Thank you. Thank you to all of my colleagues and Madam Speaker. Today, I'm proud to vote on Resolution 66A, "New York is a Union Town." This resolution is a declaration from the City Council. We stand with workers organizing across New York City. We unequivocally condemn union-busting corporations, as well as the Trump administration's attacks on the fundamental rights of organized labor. In a speech he gave in 1966, Martin Luther King quoted then-United Auto Workers leader Walter Ruther on the nature of power. "Power," he said, "is the ability to make the largest corporation in the world, General Motors, say yes when they wanted to say no. If we ever hope to have the power to defeat the Trump administration and all the attacks on democracy and freedom, we need a labor movement that has the power to make giant corporations like Amazon and Starbucks say yes when they want to say no. And for that, we need cities like New York to show that we have the backs of our unions, our organizers, and our workers. That's why I'm voting yes, and I hope that you will too. I want to thank the workers and organizers who continue to push forward in the face of enormous pressure, especially our friends at the Teamsters, Amazon Labor Union, Starbucks Workers United, and my coworkers and colleagues in the council staff. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Rivera. Thank you so much, Majority Leader. Formerly incarcerated individuals are among the most vulnerable in our state. Due to overpolicing and a lack of resources, many come from already marginalized backgrounds, only to then endure brutal prison conditions and years of isolation from society, and then they're released with little to no support. In New York, forty percent of formerly incarcerated individuals experience joblessness. If we believe in rehabilitation and reintegration, we must address this gap in resources. Resolution 371A urges the state legislature to pass the Reentry Assistance Bill, which would provide $425 per month for up to six months to people returning from state prisons. Research consistently shows that direct cash payments are one of the most effective ways to ease reentry and reduce recidivism, while also being cost-effective. I'm proud to be standing alongside Councilmember Nurse as we pass this resolution, and I urge my colleagues to vote yes on Reso 371. Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Today, we'll vote on Resolution 339, which calls on Governor Hochul to sign the Local Input in Community Health Care Act, a bill sponsored by State Senator Gustavo Rivera and Assembly Member Joanne Simon, which passed both the Senate and Assembly with strong bipartisan support. This bill would improve public notice and community involvement. When hospitals propose to close entirely or shut down key units like childbirth, emergency rooms, or mental services and addiction treatment, it would strengthen state government oversight of proposed hospitals and hospital closures. And just to put the numbers in front of everyone, from 1997 to 2024, fifty-three short-term acute care hospitals out of over two hundred in New York State closed, including twenty in New York City alone, causing the state approximately eight thousand hospital beds, or sixteen percent of all hospital beds. It happened in my district with Mount Sinai Beth Israel, disproportionately affecting Bellevue, and it can happen in yours. We need this legislation because hospital closures aren't just bureaucratic decisions. They can mean life or death for communities, and this state bill can make that change. Please vote aye.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 66A condemns the Trump administration's ongoing efforts to dismantle federal labor protections, standing in unwavering solidarity with unionization efforts across New York City's workforce, and affirming the fundamental rights of all workers to organize, bargain collectively, and hold free and fair union elections. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 339B calls on the New York State Assembly to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill 1226 and Assembly Bill 6004, the Local Input in Community Health Care Act. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 371A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill 4078 and Assembly Bill 193 in relation to providing money upon release for certain incarcerated individuals. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 520 recognizes July 2nd annually as Thurgood Marshall Day in the City of New York to promote his contributions and legacy as a pillar of the civil rights movement. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 853 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to amend the vehicle and traffic law to permit a motor vehicle's vehicle identification number to be listed in a notice of violation instead of license plate number, in circumstances when a license plate of such vehicle is missing, concealed, obscured, or distorted. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 896 recognizes June 25th, 2025, as the seventy-fifth anniversary of the beginning of the Korean War, and commemorating June 25th annually as Korean War Remembrance Day in the City of New York to honor those who served and to express hope for a lasting peace. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Brewer, followed by Nurse, then Sanchez.
Oh, boy, okay, wait a minute, what just happened here? Thank, I know, I'm here. Thank you very much. I just want to thank the interns who are here today. Max Bornshin, who is a rising senior at American University, Alexander Hayes, who's a rising junior at Middlebury College, and Eric Gallop, who's a rising sophomore at Middlebury College and a former elected official from Westchester County, and I just want to say how much I appreciate their work, and all interns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Nurse, followed by Sanchez, then Banks. Thank you, Majority Leader. Over the last few months, we have seen a terrifying assault on our constitutional rights, hitting our immigrant communities the hardest. There are already too many horror stories. In April, three children, all of whom were citizens, and one who had cancer, were abruptly deported to Honduras. Other children are being left behind in U.S. custody as their parents are being deported, and ISIS snatching people in the hallways, courtrooms, and lobbies of federal office buildings as they check in with immigration authorities, which is following the law. In March, Abrego Garcia was deported to El Salvador's infamous mega-prison, despite a 2019 court order barring his deportation due to a legitimized risk of persecution. Trump's racist, xenophobic immigration enforcement has one defining feature, and that is skipping due process. When our country ignores due process, it threatens us all. The Constitution is clear that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. It doesn't qualify these rights based on
It doesn't qualify these rights based on where you were born, your immigration status, the color of your skin, what language you speak, or your political beliefs. This right is non-negotiable, and one of the only things keeping our country from sliding into a dangerous space. It is the only thing protecting any of us from being arbitrarily thrown in prison or deported. So, when we fight for our immigrant communities, we are fighting for ourselves. That's why today I'm introducing a resolution today to condemn the Trump administration for disappearing immigrants to prisons in foreign countries. These actions present an existential threat to our neighbors and loved ones, and I encourage all of my colleagues to sign on. And I thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Banks, then Hanif.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Just want to say I'm going to sign on to that resolution, Councilmember Nurse. First of all, our city has a building code, has had a building code for many years. I'm introducing Intro 1321, which would establish a more comprehensive code that would apply to existing buildings. The Department of Buildings arrived at this code through a consensus process with industry representatives, and I look forward to hearing public stakeholders' perspectives. Then I just want to take this moment. I want to take this moment to speak plainly about the horrific immigration policies and practices that we are seeing under the Trump administration. Immigrants are being arrested at courthouses, ripped from their schools, targeted at graduations, places that were once considered sacred, off-limits even, in the harshest of times. Workers are being detained just for trying to feed their families. These are not isolated incidents. This is a deliberate strategy of fear meant to criminalize people simply for existing. Let's be clear, these policies are not just about immigration. They are a part of a full-scale assault on working-class communities across this country, people of color, the very backbone of this country. The Trump administration is not only rounding up immigrants, it's working to gut Social Security, Medicare, education, housing supports, everything our families rely on to survive and succeed. As a daughter of immigrants, I know the fear, heartbreak, and trauma that ICE brings to our community. And I am using my time today to say that we will not back down. That New York City deserves to thrive, and we do so because of our diversity, because of our resilience, and because we fight back. We must call this what it is, a violation of civil liberties, of human rights, and of basic decency. I stand with all Americans working to organize, resist, and protect our neighbors every single day. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Banks, followed by Hanif, then Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce Resolution 927, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation that will allocate a portion of state revenues from sports betting to support youth sports programs and upgrade community sports infrastructure and expand access to recreational athletics for young people across the state. This resolution was inspired by conversations with supporters, and most importantly, with young people themselves during a press conference from Intro 643 to Hoop It Up Act, introduced by my colleague, co-prime sponsor, Councilmember Riley. Through that dialogue, it became even clearer how critical it is to invest in youth development, not just through education, but through recreation, teamwork, and creating the safe spaces for physical activity. With this resolution, we're pushing for a long-term, sustainable investment in our youth, ensuring that they have access to sports, recreational spaces, and the kinds of opportunities that promote health and discipline and community. This is, this is about more than, this is about more than just athletics. This is about access and giving our young people more positive options. I ask that you all support this legislation, and I want to thank Councilmember Riley and Councilmember Lewis for co-priming this resolution. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Hanif, followed by Mealy, then Minority Leader Ariola.
Thank you. Today, I'm introducing Intro 1303, which would launch a public education campaign on fertility care. I'm proud to be joined by 19 members of the Women's Caucus in introducing this bill. This is what it looks like when women lead. Amidst the GOP's attacks on family-building care like IVF, it's critical that New Yorkers know what services are available to them. Thanks to our partners in Albany, many services are available for free or low cost to families covered by private insurance or Medicaid. However, they are often underutilized due to a lack of awareness or wrongful assumptions about services being cost prohibitive. That's why I worked with groups like Planned Parenthood, the Center for Reproductive Rights, and the American Society for Reproductive Medicine on this legislation. I'm also proud to be introducing Intro 1304 to improve bicycle safety alongside Transportation Chair Brooks Powers and Councilmembers Brewer and Wrestler. I love the city bike system. It's a vital part of our transportation network, but we need to ensure users ride safely, especially first-time riders and those using e-bikes. This bill would require city bike users to review the rules of the road before their first ride, and would mandate that traffic safety information be clearly displayed both on the app and at docking stations. I want to thank good neighbors of Park Slope in my district for their partnership in shaping this legislation. I urge my colleagues to sign on and help us make our streets safer for everyone. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Mealy, followed by Minority Leader Ariola, then Councilmember Menon. Recognizing Minority Leader Ariola.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing a local law to amend the administrative code of the city of New York in relation to after-action reports following emergency declarations. When our city and state issue a state of emergency, our city must be held accountable and be required to produce an after-action report detailing the emergency response and suggestions to better respond in future emergencies of the same nature. We went through the unimaginable with the COVID-19 pandemic, and we have never seen any details about how decisions were made and why they were made. We have no detailed agency reports as to what discussions were had regarding city workers who did not want to take a brand-new vaccine, and what the protocol was for reasonable accommodation requests were being granted and denied. New Yorkers deserve answers, and the city and the mayor need to be more transparent about actions they take that are affecting lives. And that is why I'm urging you all to sign on to Intro 1300. Thank you for the time.
Recognizing Councilmember Menon, followed by Stevens, then Dinowitz.
Thank you. Today, I'm introducing two bills to reform the city's broken procurement practices that have lacked vital checks and balances. An example of this broken process is the administration's recent $432 million emergency no-bid contract with DOTCO for asylum seekers that resulted in chronic food waste, unlicensed security guards, and ultimately, an investigation by the state attorneys general. My first bill, Intro 1309, co-sponsored with Councilmember Wan, requires that emergency contracts be limited to 30 days unless renewed by the Controller and Corporation Council. In addition, contracts would have to be sent within 15 days of execution to the Controller for review. Emergencies, by their very definition, are supposed to be short in duration, and our emergency procurement process should reflect that and not allow what was done during COVID, where under Mayor de Blasio, over $7 billion was spent on no-bid contracts. No-bid contracts were extended over 100 times, or during this administration, what happened with asylum seeker crisis, and that is honestly why over $4 billion a year was spent per year on the asylum seeker crisis because of these no-bid contracts. My second bill, Intro 1310, addresses a loophole by some property owners that are using opaque subcontractors to make additional profits for themselves. For example, David Levitin, a landlord whose buildings are contracted by the city with not-for-profits to provide facilities for homeless shelters, has previously required not-for-profits to also subcontract with its own maintenance and extermination companies that is basically generating additional revenue for him at the hand of taxpayers for himself without any oversight by the city. I ask my colleagues to join me on these two bills that will finally provide the proper oversight and put an end to the prolonged emergency no-bid contracting process. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Stevens, followed by Dinowitz, then Moreno.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm introducing Reso 935, calling upon New York City to recognize the institutional systemic racism and generational harm embedded in today's child protective services. This legislation is a demand for acknowledging and accountability as it's time for us to have uncomfortable conversations as the truth is necessary when it comes to bringing change to address institution and systematic racism. We cannot continue to ignore the undeniable data that Black and Latino children make up nearly 90% of those ACS cases, despite no evidence that those families face greater challenges than others. The system rooted in long and painful history of anti-blackness and stances of family separation and has inflicted generations of harm under the guidance of protection. It is time we name this harm, recognize the trauma, and the commitment, commit ourselves to fundamental transformational and a system change that often is pushed by poverty, that is punishing poverty and criminalizes care. I urge my colleagues to sign on today as we dismantle a system that we no longer serve our families and communities as a whole. It is our responsibility as electors to reimagine what true safety, healing, and equality looks like for our city. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Dinowitz, then Moreno.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I just want to take one more moment to congratulate you, Genesis. And I think your whole story just exemplifies what it means to be a New Yorker. I mean, your mom stepped up to become a cop, to keep her community safe and take care of all of you. And when she was killed, when she was taken from us, you stepped up, and you took care of your family. And we could see the results. I know now your two younger siblings are in jobs that are taking care of other people. And you not only stepped up for them to be their mom, you fought for them for the rights you deserved and for so many families after you may unfortunately need to exercise. And you fought, and you stepped up, and Majority Leader Farias stepped up to work hard to make sure that this happened, that you got what you deserved. And I just, I just think it's so telling of what it means to be a good New Yorker. And that's your story, and I just, I think especially now in our country, as we have leaders who are choosing to divide us, choosing to instill fear and uncertainty in government and in each other, that when we look at your story of your mom, you, your siblings, this council, that it really is a story of stepping up, coming together, and using government to help people. And that's what we should look to. We should look to you. We should look to this council when we see what government is, what government can do, and what good families could do for this city.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you, Majority Leader. This is my first time speaking on the floor, other than an enthusiastic hear or aye, so I'll try to say something slightly more meaningful. First, an early happy Flag Day to everyone. I'll be proudly flying not only the American flag, but the flag of New York City and New York State. And it's a good day to remember that no matter our party, our ideology, or our borough, we're all New Yorkers, all trying to make this city better. And it's a real privilege to work alongside all of you in that shared mission. I want to quickly sound the alarm about something happening at the mayor's Charter Revision Commission. Apparently, they're considering major changes to how we vote, including a top-two election system. And that may sound technical or even reasonable, but it's a disaster in practice. If you look at California, there have been multiple elections where the general election featured two Democrats and no Republican, or two Republicans and no Democrats. And in cases where sometimes it's two Republicans fighting to represent a Democratic district, or two Democrats fighting to represent a Republican district. In one case, 60% of voters in a district didn't have a candidate from their party to vote for in the final round. That's not a democracy. It's a coin toss at a rigged casino. We already have a better model right here in New York, which, in my view, is the way we currently run special elections, one round, nonpartisan. It's fair, it's simple, and every voter gets a real say. There are still two public hearings left, one on Staten Island and one in Manhattan. And I urge all of my colleagues to consider testifying or submit written comments, because if we sleepwalk into top two, the only ones who'll be truly represented are political consultants who may benefit from this sort of a system. Thank you, and again, happy preemptive Flag Day.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you very much. The stated meeting of June 11, 2025 is hereby adjourned.